I'm good, but I ain't that good. I can't predict the future.
Yeah.
All right. So, just to clarify, your motion is A through L with the House as the primary structure.
Right.
Not including a barn that hasn't been built yet. When they get ready to build a barn.
They're gonna have to come back.
Come back.
Okay.
And determine whether that barn is gonna be a second present structure?
Right. Okay. Everybody's.
They may go out of business. I mean, you know, all kinds of things could happen.
Doug, you good?
All right. The secondor in, I'm gonna ask that we, okay, go ahead.
Jeff was the second.
Jeff was the second and.
I heard that Jeff was.
He was, sorry.
Second. And who was the mover?
I made the motion.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have one of our other upcoming cases concerned that he can't see the video, and so if we can at least call IT and C, if you want to take just a five-minute recess, and I'll call IT and C if we.
He says it's up now.
It's up, no.
Okay.
He says it's up.
Thank you. Let me.
Okay, Mr. Sitchcock.
Yes.
Mr. Courier will be in touch with you, and the next step will be to, for this to go in front of the county commissioners.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, do you, do you have the date for that, or do I need to get that from Doug?
You will get that from Doug.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So, we're going to move to item four, new business, before we take, take on C and D, three C and three D. New business is an application for variance, V A R 2021-01, Donald N. Akins, 2734 Woodland Road. It's to replace an RV. Do we have?
Yep.
Okay.
Let me get there.
Hello?
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
This is Doug, this is Doug Courier with Upson County, and you are live during the public hearing. I'm gonna turn you over to the chair if you please state your name and address for us.
Okay. I'm Donald Akins, and I'm at 1315 City Side Road, Tompkins.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Akins. We're going to open the public hearing for this, so if you have comments for the planning commission, feel free to share those with us now.
Okay. Well, I've been trying to log in repeatedly, but have been unsuccessful, but
I think.
In fact, we still, we still can't get it on a laptop, or an iPhone, or another tablet computer. We've just been unable to log into the Upson County Planning Commission, 412, 2021. Just cannot log on. But anyway, I can just speak to you by phone, I suppose.
Sure. Yeah, they, I believe it's back up now. I'm not sure if you can.
You don't put in planning commission.
Okay.
It's Upson County.
We'll try to get.
Upson County Board of Commissioners live.
It's Upson County Board of Commissioners live.
Okay, Upson County Board of Commissioners live, did you say?
On YouTube.
Yeah.
And then you should see the planning commission meeting for today's date.
Try this, this link here, okay?
Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, the Board of Commissioners is showing different dates. We did see that today's date for the Upson County Planning Commission, YouTube.
That's the one you should be clicking on.
Right. Keep getting an error.
We just keep getting an error every time we try to log in for whatever device.
Okay. If you want to, we have you on speakerphone, so if you want to talk, talk to the planning commission, everybody here can hear you.
Okay.
And then Doug can give his staff report once we close the public hearing, and that would be, assuming that you have received that information.
I, I did receive it today, yes. I have read it, and I have received it, and I'm not sure I have any comments to make further than what I wrote in my variance application, but I'm ready to listen and hear what, what the decision has been.
Okay. All right. Let me see if any of the commissioners have any questions for you.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. There are no questions from the commissioners, so we will close the public hearing, and we will hear Mr. Courier's staff report.
Okay.
So if you'll just stay on the line with us, and after that, if there are any questions, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, okay. I'll stay on the line. Thank you.
All right. This may not be a term we're too familiar with at the planning commission, but TRRV is a program that was initiated when y'all did the RV ordinance, and the board of commissioners wanted to have a grandfathering period for those who were living in, in their RVs, and they were able to register. I think we were in the, between 30 and 40 ended up registering the program. I think we're down to, in the twenties. Mr. Akins was one of those who registered back on February 19, 2019. Now, they were given copies of the ordinance, and they were made understood that they could not move the RV, that it had to be that RV, and they could not transfer this program to anybody else. That was made very clear. You have a copy of the application that they signed to that effect. Here is that policy from the ordinance that approved the program. First, there's a very strong policy statement that RVs are not something you live in. There are temporary uses for those, but they're not for permanent living. And then the program itself, which was TRRV standard, current non-conforming recreational vehicle use by owner occupants as permanent residents. And B2, the owner occupants who register at program startup are the only occupants who may be part of the program, and they must remain in the same RV on the same property to remain in the program. So this was very clear from the beginning. It was in the ordinance from the beginning. You do have standards for review for variances, as well as these TRRV standards. Basically, there has to be an extreme hardship where you're denied all use of the property. Obviously, that's not true. There's a single-family residence on the property. There's actually room to have a second residence, because this is AR-zoned. It would have to be a manufactured home, or it would have to be a site-built home, but that could be done. So, not only are the TRRV standards not met, but the variance standards aren't met either. There are other directions that could be pursued. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the request for variance, and that concludes my staff report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions from that? Comments? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, second, to deny, to deny.
Second.
All in favor?
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Akins. This will, Doug will be in touch with you. This will go, oh, no, it will not go in variance. Yeah, it's a variance. So could you hear?
Yes, I was able to hear.
Okay. All right. So. Do you want to, Doug, do we need to do anything different from what, with what he currently has, knowing this?
Well, he has options, and if he wants to call me on the phone, I don't know if he has the financial ability, but it's AR-zoned, so there are a second home, and it's over four acres, so there could be a second home built on it.
Or he can stay in the same RV.
Or he can stay in the same RV.
Okay. So, Mr. Akins, if you have additional questions, you can contact Mr. Courier for some options that might be a remedy for your situation. Or you could choose to stay in the same RV.
Okay. All right. I'm staying.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay. For B? Is this the one, Doug, we need to make sure that we're?
Yes, this is the one that was calling, is very concerned that he's not been able to log in. Now he's given me a different phone number, so.
Okay.
We'll try his different. His different phone, well, let's see if we can, hold on a minute, see what he says.
Sure, sure, still.
Still up.
It is? Okay.
Hello, this is Lou.
Mr. Katserman, this is Doug Courier, and you are live at the public hearing for the cell tower issue. I'll turn you over to the chair. If you'd please introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
I am Lou Katserman. My address is 495 Tennessee Street, Suite 152, Memphis, Tennessee. I apologize for changing the phone number on you, Doug. I cannot access the meeting on my laptop, but I can see you on my phone. I didn't know if the phone and the meeting would work on the same phone, so that's why I gave you a different phone number. I apologize.
No problem, no problem. Mr. Katserman, we're going to open the public hearing, but we're going to kind of combine these, if you will, the special exception application, as well as the variance application.
Yes.
We have the information that you provided. If you would like to talk to the planning commission, now is your opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. Tower Ventures proposes a swap and drop or replacement of existing 170-foot tower on Bay Road in Tompkins, Georgia, for a new 250-foot tower. The new tower will be a self-support design. It will be built to support cellular communication while with data tenant. Although AT&amp;T is the anchor tenant, the new tower will be designed to accommodate multiple cellular tenants for a total of three tenants. We are, we are the property owner. The tower equipment will be placed in a compound area of 56 feet by 56 feet. We will erect a chain-link fence around the compound, and the, we will have gates that will be locked, and we will landscape the property. The property that the tower will be built on is small, and the unlikely event of a failure or tower collapse, the new tower will be engineered to fall within the boundaries of the TVT block. Ensure the replacement tower will not fall across any surrounding property line. There is a need for this, for improved cellular coverage in this area of Upson County. AT&amp;T has provided a letter of need, along with propagation maps showing the lack of existing coverage. These maps demonstrate what AT&amp;T's coverage will look like after the AT&amp;T site is, is on the air and their equipment is on the new tower. The proposed tower will not only provide better cellular coverage and faster data speeds, the tower will greatly improve Upson County's E911 Emergency Services Network. The citizens of Upson County benefit every time a cellular carrier expands its network, because each site enhances the licensee's ability to provide emergency services. We are also offering up, and this is because we're asking for variance, we're offering to do an annual inspection on the tower. We have presented a fall letter and calculations that this 250-foot tower will be designed to fall within 30 feet. Tower failure is actually a very unlikely event. The failure rate is like 1/10th of 1%. These towers withstand hurricanes, tornadoes, ice storms, straight-line windstorms, and all kinds of other types of weather. They're designed for this. They're over-engineered, if anything, and that we plan to back up what we say with an annual inspection on our dime, and that inspection would be with the parameters determined by the Upson County Planning and Building Department. We also, at this time, would offer antennas based on our tower to EMS services within Upson County. Tower Ventures appreciates the Upson County Building and Zoning Department consideration of this application. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Katserman. Questions for him?
No.
Mr.? No. Did we have anybody else to?
We did not receive any phone calls or any inquiries.
Okay. All right.
Was there some issue about putting Upson County Sheriff's Office on this cell tower?
You have a, what would we call it, an email that was submitted, and Mr. Katserman has a copy of this. I received it today.
Well, he said E911, or, he didn't say Sheriff's Office.
EMA.
He said EMA, you know. Is that all the same time?
EMS.
That's a question for Mr. Katserman.
Yes. Mr. Katserman, when you're saying that you're, you're allowing, would allow Upson EMS services, does that include our sheriff's department, EMA?
Yes, ma'am.
All, all of Upson County Emergency Services?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I think.
We, we, we have in several other municipalities. One that comes to mind is Germantown, Tennessee. They have a system on a tower we own in the Johnson Road Park site, and it's worked out well for everybody. They didn't have to build a tower, and they piggybacked on ours, and everybody's very happy over it.
Well, I saw a list, and I don't have it handy, but it came from, I think, the sheriff's office, and there was like quite a number of slots for repeaters, and, yeah, can you read that? Ask him if he's seen that list.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I have seen that list. And what we would do is y'all would install your own equipment. I would probably, the way I understood it from that list, where I've got it in front of me, your ground equipment is in a shelter. I would probably ask y'all to go ahead and put another shelter below the tower, and then install the antennas on the tower and the microwave dishes. That would probably be the simplest way to do it. But the tower and ground space would be at no charge to the county.
All right. And that's my question.
Okay. All right.
I know this may be a little regressive. What if we get Ozzy to speak?
Sure.
Can I be okay with that?
I'm.
As long as he's loud enough so that Mr. Katserman can hear.
We're having a private hearing, so he's part of the public at this point, so.
Can you, can you speak? Do you have any input you'd like to add?
I mean, I was curious about the building.
Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sergeant Rodney Ozzy, the Upson County Sheriff's Office. I'm the 911 director. I live at 210 Shields Drive, but I work at 235 Aviation Drive, which is where the 911 center is located at. Sir, the, we got, if you're looking at that list, I typed that list this morning. We have two boxes in there, the towers that are about seven foot tall. You say you want us to build a secondary building for, to put all that in?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the specs on that equipment, if it can be placed outdoors, or outdoors underneath a awning, or a, some type of cover for the elements. I'm assuming if it's, is it inside the shelter now, or is it outside the shelter?
It's inside the shelter, sir.
Okay, then it's, yes, then I would recommend just moving the shelter there and putting, leaving that equipment inside of it. That's probably the best thing to do.
Yes, sir. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And we can work that out. That's not, that's not a problem. I assure you.
It's not really an issue at this point.
Okay, I just want to.
We're, we're, we're just permission to hide the equipment on the tower.
What we have up there is, we have two repeaters, or digital repeaters now, but we fire, we have fire and the, and then all of it together on the tower. Fires all the county fires on there, city fires inside the city limits, but we have county fire up there, and then all the sheriff's office equipment, which is also the 911 part of two, because we are, we are part of the sheriff's office, the 911 center.
All right. I mean, we work this out. I keep running out the city of Germantown, Tennessee, because I was involved in that tower, and it was a similar deal, and it can all be worked out, I assure you.
Yes, sir.
No, you have it.
Yes, sir.
You're happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? And again, remember, we're talking about.
I was gonna have a staff report, if you're going.
Yeah, okay. No, no other questions from Mr. Katserman right now. Okay. Okay. Mr. Katserman, we'll close the public hearing and get Mr. Courier's staff report.
Thank you.
You stay, you can stay on the line, though, in case we have any additional questions.
Yes.
Basically, what you're gonna hear is a repeat of a lot of what you already heard. There's just not much more to discuss here, other than the critical issues. This is knocking down one tower, which is 170 feet tall, and a guide tower, and going to a 250-foot, they call them self-supporting, or a lattice work, and you've got those in the folders, the binders that you, you were given. The application states that this will improve coverage, quality, capacity, and speed. They've agreed to the enclosing, enclosure, which is part of your ordinance. Now, mixing this now with the variance, they have stated in the application that this is a bend-and-buckle tower, that the fall zone will be 30 feet around it. We do have a, I guess you would consider it a third party. That's the manufacturer, Rome Products LLC, who has stated in a couple of letters in your materials that that would be the fall zone. As you know, because we just did an update of the telecommunication ordinance, we required everything to have 100% fall, so that the area of property under control of the tower owner, or at least somebody connected to them, has to be equivalent to the height. 30 feet and 250 feet aren't close, so that variance is something that you're gonna have to discuss as part of this hearing and this meeting. The tower will be lighted. As you heard, AT&amp;T will be the anchor. The wind load speed is in the application. That's 109 miles an hour, three-second wind speed, with no ice. Those are bursts, in other words, and 30 mile an hour, three-second gusts with one inch of radio ice, which I presume means ice on the complete, all the way around, not just on part of the tower. In other words, it's not unbalanced, the weight. So this is the graphic. This is maybe the most important information in the application, is this is what the property looks like. You can see the tower, sort of in the middle. I'll call this a hangar. So that, the stretched-out hangar, you can sort of see the tower right in there. So obviously, with a fall line, if it fell this way or that way, it would work that way, but there are all these open areas for the fall. I'm not sure how, these are obviously the guy wires for the current tower. That's why it's configured the way it is for the guy wires. So I don't know how long those are, but obviously, we would expect to see some sort of a radial type or a circular thing if there was gonna be a fall area. We basically got two property owners here, and this is the configuration. Again, this is out of the materials that you received. This is the self-supporting of the lattice work. That'll be the 250 feet. So basically, you've got something that's a straight pole now, with the wires coming off. This would be the, the new design. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Do you have a photograph of what's out there now?
We had a little problem with access, so. Unfortunately, I was out there to post the sign, but I was not able to make it out there a second time to try to get into it.
All right. That's Day Road. What does that other road give?
This is Gale Lane, and this is Day Road.
That is, okay. Who owns the adjacent property?
Let's see. Neighbor's name is Public Service Tower Incorporated, Reynolds, Georgia. They own 146 acres. The company that we're dealing with here, TVT1 LLC, is a Delaware company. They purchased the property, according to the tax and accessory records, in 2019.
But the, the big tract of land is owned by another tower company?
Right. That Reynolds, Georgia, the neighbor.
Okay.
So I guess the decision here is, you know, we got a new neighbor, a new owner, relatively speaking, and you've got, you know, a new tower going in. Is this a point where you want to, you know, enforce what you just recently reinforced, and that was the fall area? But on the other hand, you have an engineer saying that this is a crumple-and-curl type of tower, that it won't fall 250 feet if something catastrophic happens. So that's why the variance has been requested, and there for you.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Katserman? No?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd move to approve the variance.
The variance and special exception?
And the special exception.
And the special exception. What is the special exception again?
The tower itself.
Tower itself.
The tower itself.
And variance is.
Because of the height?
Variance is a fall zone.
Right. Remember, anything over 75 feet in AR.
Okay. Yes, yes. Prove it off.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Would you now?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Katserman, we will now go to the board of commissioners meeting next month, and I'll get that date to you, but it'll be a similar hearing, just and I'll get that date to you, but it'll be a similar hearing, just some different folks there, and I'll be presenting my staff before that meeting also. But as you've heard, you now have the full recommendation unanimous for the variance and for the special exception.
Thank you, thank you very much. I very appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Katschman.
Thank you. Y'all take care.
Now.
Thanks.
And I'm sure there were two conditions that he volunteered, and I'm sorry I didn't think about this 30 seconds ago, but there was annual inspections and, of course, then the condition to allow the county to put its facilities there. So would you like to amend the motion and include those two, or you do not want to forward those two conditions to the Board of Commissioners?
No, I will amend the, yeah, because we discussed all of that.
Right.
So you include these two conditions?
It's included in that.
It was included in what I, you know, what I proposed, my motion. Especially behind other county equipment, I think that's really important.
Very good. Then we'll forward it.
The annual inspections, I don't know.
Well, we've confirmed it in the meeting, so that's a good thing.
Sorry, I was not clear on that. I was thinking it was included in that, so. All right. Going back to item C of old business, the gateway ordinance. We have some new information provided to us. We had asked for some additional information on surrounding areas or other areas that had a gateway ordinance.
Right.
Have you guys had a chance to look at this? We have Fayette County and Peachtree City. Both an overlay district for Peachtree City and then the architectural standards ordinance and then for Fayette County, landscape requirements and corridor overlay. Have you guys had a chance to review this?
No.
Okay.
As much as I hate to, I mean, if we're sincere about reviewing this and looking at this, it might be prudent to have a work session to do that, if we're sincere about it. However, if we just want to glance at it and go with what we got, because it's Hudson County and, you know, that's how we roll, I don't know. I'm hoping it'll up for discussion.
I like the idea about having a work session, because I think it is important. It sets the tone for anybody coming into the county from any direction. So I don't think it's something we need to just.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we need to do a due diligence, too, sit down and hammer that thing out.
I apologize for being so cavalier.
No.
But, yeah, I believe, I think it's important that we go through this and just, you know, sincerely take a look at it and see if it was something we want to incorporate in our ordinance.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead and set a date for a work session to go through this?
I think we'll get.
Okay.
Who are you asking that?
Everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're all here.
Yes. Are you proposing a day or?
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is I'd like to do this in order to hopefully come back around to have this conversation next meeting. We've been pushing this and pushing this.
We need to do this quickly.
Yes.
Yeah, so what you're saying is between now and next month. When is the next meeting?
May 10th.
Well, and give Doug enough time to maybe incorporate in kind of language or, you know, if we produce a product from the work session, we need to give him how much time would you need to?
Depends on how much.
Depends on how much you're putting.
How much or how little we provide.
I hate to do this, but how would a Friday, would a Friday work for you guys?
If Friday, you propose a particular day?
The 30th?
The 30th of April? Yes.
What time?
You tell me.
5:30, 6 o'clock, 5:30.
Five. I could do 5:30.
5:30 on the 30th.
Unless y'all want to do it at lunch.
No.
Okay, so.
So we're looking at?
April 30th.
30th.
At 5:30.
On my calendar here.
Okay. Doug, can you see if the magistrate's conference room is available?
I will.
All right. So if we can come to that meeting, having reviewed this, then hopefully, we can come back to this meeting, the next, the May meeting, with some strong recommendations to move this forward, at least get something on paper for us.
Yeah, we've been, I mean, this is time to move forward with this.
Yes. Okay, all right.
This, I mean, this is much more important than tiny homes.
Yes.
Move that, too.
So the tiny homes ordinance is the next one. I know we've got some information here. I know we were talking about some of the, using the fact sheet as a guide. I don't know, we've got this draft one language. Has everybody been through this recently to familiarize yourself? Is anybody? Huh? You're not, okay. How do you guys want to handle this? Do you want to maybe in, may have a work session on this?
Let's finish gateway.
You want to finish gateway first?
Let's finish gateway. It's a problem, it's a problem.
Yeah, we can table this.
I mean, I don't know that there's.
Is anybody proposing a tiny home village or?
We, I would say, we get regular calls asking about it every, one every two or three months, probably. But no, nobody is proposing.
That's just the nature of the call.
I want to put tiny homes in, or I want to develop a community, can I do it? And we tell them, no, not at this time. And I'm told that the city has a manufacturer of tiny homes in the city, so.
Really?
Somebody in Thomasville manufactures tiny homes.
Well, my understanding of tiny homes is, you know, some of them are stick-built and some of them are like on little trailers and, I mean.
We've already, we've already settled the term, we didn't want anything wheels.
Yeah, right, right. Now, he said that's a manufacturer, and that's kind of what got me on that little tangent. So I was just wondering if you don't know any details.
No, but if you'd like me to look into it, I can get some more information.
Yeah, no.
You can build and drop this necessarily.
True.
I think it'd be built on, on a no-site, dropped on the ground.
I would be, I am curious about.
Adrian Holmes built houses many years ago.
I mean, do you know who's, is it the same people that are calling you about tiny homes?
As a manufacturer, no, I.
No, I mean, as a developer or whatever.
No, I don't think so. Their random calls are not regular. It's not like I want to come in and talk about my 10 acres. It's not quite that specific. It's sort of like.
And how do we handle those calls? Right now, we're telling them there's.
We're telling them at this point, there's, we don't have any allowance for a home. The smallest, we allow 700.
I guess where I was going with that is if there's somebody in the community that's interested in developing, I mean, I would, I would consider their input anyway, you know, what their thoughts are and, you know, as we construct an ordinance, you know, you know, what, at least what they might propose or, I guess, whatever in my idea, what restrictions I want to put on it.
I would say only five or 10% of those calls are people who want to do more than one. I think most of them are, you know, if I buy a piece of property, can I?
Can I put a tiny home on it?
Now, are some of them want to put multiple, or four, or five, or six? Yes, but that's the small minority of the calls.
What is the minimum square footage?
700 square feet. In R5, you're allowed 700 square.
Right now.
Maybe 700 square feet.
Right now. Right now, but that's not a tiny home.
No. Yeah, yeah, but we're talking for 150 square feet.
I didn't realize I'd been living in a tiny home all these years.
You live in a 700 square foot home?
Yeah, I didn't realize. I've been living in a tiny home since 1964.
You were ahead of your time, Doug.
700 square feet doesn't qualify as tiny. Then you get the four to five is the upper limit.
Well, if we, somebody suggested that we put this off to a May work session, do we want to pick a date now?
Do we want to do a work session in May for this, or do we want to get through with the gateway ordinance?
Let's get through with the gateway.
If there's nothing right now where something can't get through without us doing something, then I'm okay with putting that off.
Yeah, let's put it off. Let's concentrate on the gateway and get it done, get it out there.
Okay.
So if we can, can we move, do I need a motion to move the tiny home ordinance to, say, the June meeting revisit that?
Well, why don't, I'll make a motion that we just table it through right now, because we don't know, we may get called up.
I just don't want it to fall off the radar.
No, we just table it, just keep it on the agenda, take his time, we'll discuss it. But it may be July before we get to it. Or we possibly could get to it in June, but.
So leave it, leave it on the?
Well, can we decide in May, at the May meeting, whether or not we want to have a work session?
That's the possibility right there.
Yeah, we'll see where we're at.
So let's leave it on the agenda for May and we'll discuss a work session at the May meeting.
Yeah.
Then go from there. All right. There's no other business? Any planning commissioner issues and announcements, any comments?
You know, the other comment I have, again, I think we all have said it once or twice, but I appreciate everything Doug does. I know he may not get the credit that he probably deserves, but we appreciate what you do, Doug.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Amen.
Mr. Curry?
As needed planning consultant, again, Commissioner Beatty was on the committee, if you'd like to speak about it more, but the contract, as I understand, is on the agenda for tomorrow night's Board of Commissioners, so we will have our as-needed planning consultant on if any of you want to read the agreement. I'll be happy to get you a copy of it. I think the important part for this planning commission and the radio has been pretty accurate about reporting it the last couple of days, is that there are a bunch of ordinances that you really haven't even spent any time talking about yet, that the Board of Commissioners is interested in. I think that the first thing that the consultant will be tasked with, and this is just an overall agreement. My vision was that they'd be with us for about five years, and then after the five years, we would go out again and solicit input, and they might win again and be another five years, but after five years, we, you know, solicit again. But they'll be a partner, probably for at least the next five years, barring anything happening. And I think that the first ordinance is that they'll work on, because it's been, I think, a high priority for the Board of Commissioners, is those uses that you remember that we've discussed, that moratorium ordinance, and there are a number of uses there that I think they want to forward, the Board of Commissioners wants to move forward, additional conditions, requirements, standards, whatever you want to call it. I'm not quite privy to what those are, but I think that you are going to get some work brought to you that's not necessarily through staff and that, you know, as I said at a meeting, up to now, the planning commission does all the heavy lifting. And I think you're going to see now some of the heavy lifting, where you're going to be probably given ordinances that are pretty close to done. You may, you know, want to tweak a little here, a little there, but rather than the heavy lifting you're doing now, where it's like, well, where's the raw material and we have to read it and what do we like and what? That's going to be done for you, is they're going to have this ordinance that's pretty good shape. I think they're going to have been consulting with the Board of Commissioners, is this the direction you want to go, so that you'll be able to go through those ordinances fairly quickly. And we'll have a lot of assistance from Woods, is the basic name of the company. That's it for me. And then looking a little further forward, your new comp plan's not due until 2023, but that means the next budget, we need to start budgeting for that if we're going to go outside for a consultant to work on that step. There's no way staff has time to write the comp plan. So we have to, you know, who's our outside party? It may be Woods will be the one. That's, the decision hasn't been made, but the discussions I've heard have been going in that direction. So I think you're all aware of the comp plan we have now. I think that you would see something a lot more rigorous, a little more thorough, more policy statements, a little better rounded than what we've got now, so.
Yes.
I think that's what you can look forward to from Woods. And it's just a matter of, you know, the Board of Commissioners setting their sails and the direction, and obviously, you're going to be part of that, because you're going to be reviewing their work. So you may see an increase in ordinances coming your way. And that was the first item. And then the second item is we have advertised to about 19 southeastern universities for a planning intern for this summer. We've gotten up to now three responses, Auburn, Alabama A&amp;M, and I can't remember the third one. It's funny what I couldn't remember, Auburn the last time. But anyway, we've got three in. I'm going to wait till the end of the week and then either at the end of this week or Monday, start to schedule interviews with the three candidates and see where we go. That concludes my announcement, ma'am chair.
All right. Do I have any objection to adjournment?
Make a motion.
Second. Paul and Bailey?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Seven o'clock, thank you.
Doug, did you just find this back?